This afternoon, and we took a recess while we were on discussion with Bill 2, where are we? 286. Senator Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As we were setting aside Bill 286, we were working on a provision and how we can address the impact, costs of this holiday. And I believe we've cleared up some of those issues during this break regarding how this provision would be applied. And Madam Speaker, this basically would allow the employee that would normally work on that day have the option to select another day prior to or after this holiday to basically offset that day that they'll be working on the holiday pay. And Madam Speaker, this addresses the costs associated with the holiday. Our whole goal, Madam Speaker, is to, again, to reestablish a day that is a segue in March to Mess tomorrow, to elevate the importance of our history and our tomorrow heritage. But, Madam Speaker, I just want to clarify too that I, like you and many of my colleagues, I'm looking at this very cautiously as far as the associated cost. And I believe we have a solution to address that cost by being fair to our employees and allowing them that option to select a day or working with their employer to take a time off with pay, with pay, for another day. So I hope that addresses the concerns of my colleagues, Madam Speaker, and I look forward to further discussion on this. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Morrison. On the motion, Senator Dada? Yes, so you're recognized, Senator.
I just, if the author would yield, the provision in the bill says that if I work on a holiday, I will not get paid this holiday pay, which is double time. Instead, if I work on a holiday, I am to be given a day off on another day. And so the question that I have is, that assumes that that individual will be able to take that day off. But we do know that there are some departments where there's a manpower shortage to begin with, and so it is difficult to give them that day off. So then what happens then if, because I think there's a timeframe of two weeks that he will be given that time off. And so then maybe if the author would yield and kind of share his thoughts as to how do we address that then?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
If I may, Madam Speaker, I'd like to take a recess, and I'll talk to the previous speaker on this. I didn't get a clear understanding of where he's going with this. I'd like to talk to him.
We're going to take a brief recess. The legislature's back in session. We recess briefly for the author and a member who wanted some questions answered. So I'm hoping then that Senator Dada, if your question was addressed, to move on, and you still have the floor, however, to continue your discussion.
Well, actually, Madam Speaker, I just want to urge my colleagues that we need to actually approve the master plan for the port.
Oh, no, not yet. Your question, your question to Senator Morrison.
Oh, he's still got that?
We're still on that. So you still have the floor.
Well, I, oh, actually, I'm sorry. So then, actually, I think in that brief recess, there's been another solution that may have been found, so I'll just wait for that.
Okay, thank you, Senator. So on the motion, I understand, is there anybody else who would like to speak on the motion? Senators Nicholas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd first like to begin by commending the author for taking us in a direction that is very necessary and proper, and that is to recognize a day for the people of Guam that is specifically addressing our culture and where we've been in our history. And what we have here before us in Bill 286 is an attempt to balance a lot of different things that are currently facing our community today. One is the preservation of our culture. Two is what are we going to do to recognize it? And three, how are we going to be able to afford it? And in Bill 286, the author attempts to do all three in a very noble fashion. However, I would like for us to consider multiple amendments that I think would address all of those concerns in a way that would allow us to move this greater question forward of whether or not we are going to have a day to recognize all of the achievements of the people of Guam, whether or not that day is going to be affordable with our current fiscal situation, and whether or not that day is going to be fair in terms of who's going to be able to avail of it and how those are going to be compensated who aren't going to be able to avail of it. And so on my first amendment, Madam Speaker, to take us down this course of trying to reach that ultimate conclusion, on page two, lines eight through 12, I would like to propose an amendment that we strike lines eight through 12. And what that amendment would do, Madam Speaker, is it would, it would basically mean that if we are going to have a holiday for this particular purpose, then it shall be a paid holiday. And the reason why I believe that we need to be very consistent in that is I don't want us to create the impression that a day of reflection on the achievements of the people of Guam should in any way be a day that is treated differently from any other holiday that we have. I believe that a day of reflection on our own achievements as a people should be held on an equal footing with every other holiday on this island, and so I would like for our colleagues to consider an amendment to strike lines eight through 12 so that we restore the equal footing and move forward from there. And again, I understand the intent of the author in including this language. It was to make sure that we're able to afford this holiday, but I do have a future amendment that I will be proffering to address that concern. Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, it's, I'm not sure how to proceed with this because it'd be difficult for me to support that amendment unless I knew what the other amendments are that would secure the intent of this measure by Senator Morrison.
So you're objecting to the amendment?
Well, I'm not necess, see, that's why I'm saying it's a dilemma. Unless, like, maybe I can go over to his desk and sneak a look at all the other amendments. Can I do that?
Well, if we're going to do that, we'll just take a brief recess.
Thank you.
The legislature is back in session. Senator Yamashita, I know you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. During that brief recess, I was able to have a better understanding of where we are going. And so I'll let, I'll just, I'm satisfied with the answer. Thank you.
You're welcome. On the amendment, Senator Nicholas' amendments, is there anybody else who would like to speak on it? Senator, do you want to close on the amendment or just move it? So on the amendment, which is on page two, to delete subsection D, which are lines eight to twelve. Any objections? No objections? So ordered. Senator Nicholas, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, this whole process that we're going through, it's going to involve a few more amendments. And the intent is again to keep within the spirit of the law for us to be able to have a day set aside for our people to reflect, for us to be able to afford that day and for that day to be available to everybody fairly. We've addressed the third concern of the fairness by striking lines eight through twelve. I would like to now have the opportunity, if my colleagues would so indulge, first to address the question of our ability to afford it. Now, right now, striking lines eight through twelve, we've taken out that section that makes it an unpaid holiday, and it will be, in fact, a paid holiday. The problem now is that that paid holiday is going to cost us approximately $500,000 more per fiscal year. And while we cannot put a price on our culture, it's important for us to always be mindful of the fact that our culture and our ability to afford the way we function here on this island, they're interdependent. And so as we move in a direction of having that day set aside, I would like for us to take the next step of considering canceling out one of our existing holidays that are currently on the books, so that we can afford to have a holiday for our people and for us to reflect on. And so I would like to propose an amendment now to page one, line six. This is with respect to the Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. And I would like to make a, propose an amendment that we strike line six, and I would like to have an opportunity to further discuss why I believe that doing this is something that we can do, but at the same time continue to move forward and understand the spirit of Dr. King in a very different, and I would say, a far more profound way. Martin Luther King Jr. stood for civil rights. He brought it to the national stage, and he gave his life for it. Dr. King dramatically transformed the United States of America. He, in his, through his work and through his sacrifice, was able to inspire an entire nation to do away with segregation issues, deep-rooted division in communities, and he brought America to the point where we now have a black president. You know, Dr. Martin Luther King's contributions to the direction of the country are phenomenal and beyond measure. But what Dr. Martin Luther King always taught us was that we, as individuals, must be willing to do whatever is necessary in order to advance the course of a greater humanity. And that lesson, and living that lesson, and remembering that lesson, not just in Dr. Martin Luther King, but in ourselves as a people, I think would do the greatest justice to his memory. And there was a time in our own history where we stood for our civil rights as a people. And this time actually came before Dr. Martin Luther King. Civil rights movements began where America's day begins. And it began, Madam Speaker, on March 5, 1949, with the walkout of the Guam Congress. And I would like to take an opportunity to read an excerpt from a paper by Dr. Anne Perisotory writing "Civil Wrongs: The Guam Congress Walkout of 1949." And I would like the opportunity to read this into the record as it is reflective, not only of an amazing point in our history as a people, but in the very civil rights movement that Dr. Martin Luther King embodies, that was a movement that our own leaders took. In Dr. Tori's paper, she writes on page thirty-four, "Before adjourning from their March 5, 1949 session, members of the Assembly voted unanimously on the bill to provide an organic act and civil government for the island of Guam, to be transmitted to the U.S. Congress. In passing their own version of an organic act for Guam, the members of the Guam Congress sought to identify clearly the walkout as a call for U.S. citizenship and civil government, rather than as a rejection of the American presence. Following its passage, Congressman Antonio C. Cruz introduced the walkout motion, stating, and I quote, 'I move that the House of Assembly adjourn at this time and not to reconvene until such time, as this body receives a reply or the action of the Congress of the United States relative to the organic act for Guam, as passed by both Houses of the Congress,' end quote. Congressman Cruz's motion passed unanimously, beginning the walkout. And in March 5, 1949, the leaders of our island, our founding fathers, our Dr. Martin Luther Kings, in Judge Jose Simon Abusin, Father Oscar Calvo, Simon Sanchez Senior, B.J. Bordalio, Speaker Antonio Wampat, Assemblyman Carlos Titano, F.B. Leon Guerrero, Aggerde Johnston, Conception Barrett, and many, many others." I was actually very moved when I was poring through an old scrapbook of mine. My grandfather, my dad's side, he was a very, he was a very quiet congressman, but he was a member of the Assembly. All of these people, far out here in the Pacific, they lived the message of Dr. Martin Luther King, and they stood for the civil rights of the people of Guam. They stood for the citizenship of the people of Guam. And while we are still seeking a more perfect relationship with the United States, even with our recently discussed resolution on the Jones Act, it becomes our responsibility as their sons and daughters and grandsons and granddaughters to continue on in this civil rights movement that even Dr. Martin Luther King, in his work, still would like to see more progress done in the United States. But in striking out the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. holiday, we are not saying no to civil rights, and we're not disgracing Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. We're saying yes to it, and we are embodying, we are embodying the spirit of Dr. Martin Luther King in the memory of our founding fathers, who took those first steps for our civil rights, in the names of the men and women who I mentioned earlier. And so as we seek to balance out this bill, as we seek to remember where we've come from as a people, where we need to go, and what is important for us to reflect on, while we need to also balance out our ability to afford it and make sure that it's applied fairly, I would like for us to consider the second amendment to strike Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day and to further amend line seven to read "Tremor Culture and Civil Rights Day, March 5." So those are the amendments, Madam Speaker, that I'd like to proffer at this time, and I would like the body to consider it. I know that, I know that Dr. Martin Luther King is a very important man. You know, I don't have any, I don't have any second thoughts about that. But I think that even he would be proud of us as a people, because, you know, as a minority in the time, you know, for him to stand up the way he did, and to say that it's important for, for the black community to stand up in peaceful, in peaceful movement for what they deserve and what they need to stand up for, I think he would feel the same way and be very proud of us in reflecting on that and in doing that and prioritizing that. So I would like to put that before our, my colleagues, our body, to consider so that we can find this balance and move us forward in accomplishing the spirit of Bill 286. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, I have Senator Yamashita.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, while I certainly appreciate the presentation, the articulation of the argument made by the proffer, made by the mover of this amendment, Madam Speaker, I object. And I object because, as he, as the previous speaker eloquently stated, it was Dr. King's voice who led way to hearing the voices of others. It was his courage and his movement that strengthened America to what it is. And it's what encouraged your dad and others to move forward for us. I do not think we should take away this time of honor for Dr. King. At the same time, I do also agree with what different senators have stated in that make, in that heightening the holiday for us, our history, is the right thing to do. And so I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, but I am saying that we shouldn't take away the celebration of the work and the courage and the strength that Dr. King gave to us. So I object to striking, and it's hard for me really, because I don't have a copy of the amendment in front of me, to say exactly what I am objecting to.
So I repeat it then. So line six was to delete that line, that holiday, Martin Luther King Jr. Day, the third Monday of January. And then on line seven, that it would change to say to include the Chamorro, Guam History and Chamorro Heritage, is the Guam Culture, and to be inclusive of civil rights, it becomes Guam Chamorro Culture and Civil Rights Day.
And so I am in agreement with the last line that you read, or maybe the last two lines, but I disagree or object to the part that eliminates the Martin Luther King Day.
Okay, you're welcome, Senator. On the amendment, Senator Morrison.
Madam Speaker, could I ask for a brief recess, because I'm trying to get the amendments in front of me, so I can get a good gauge on this?
We'll take a brief recess. The legislature is back in session, and I hope everyone has copies of both amendments. And Senator Morrison, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I respectfully object, Madam Speaker, to the previous speaker's amendments, Madam Speaker. I certainly, I understand the works of previous legislators to work to restore Martin Luther King's Day and understanding the significance of that day. And I certainly didn't want to allow this, the intent of this bill to, or to go in that direction, Madam Speaker. I also, Madam Speaker, object to changing the name to Chamorro Culture and Civil Rights Day. Madam Speaker, during the public hearing, Madam Speaker, it was very real that the testimony that was provided by us, by our people, were clear that they support Guam History and Chamorro Heritage Day. And the reason why, Madam Speaker, this, this name, Madam Speaker, is, was vetted through feedback from our community. This is not Tommy Morrison's name. This is a name provided by our grassroots members of our community, our Chamorro teachers, our Manamku, Madam Speaker. If we're there at the testimony or the hearing, you would see the passion behind this name, Madam Speaker. It's encompassing of everything, Madam Speaker. There was feedback about just naming it Chamorro Heritage Day. There was feedback about, let's honor our history. And, and Madam Speaker, this name is the people's name. This is the name that they want, they want to give it. This day will be called Guam History and Chamorro Heritage Day. On that day of the public hearing, Madam Speaker, there was no objection to that name or this name. I appreciate the speaker's research and how he's trying to define a name and try to channel it through a very important era of our history as well. But again, Guam History covers this as well. Again, Madam Speaker, it's encompassing. Guam History talks about everything, to include our, naming it civil rights, our day of our walkout, Chifurau, Chigadau, Santa Miriam Camelin. It's encompassing of all our history. And then Chamorro Heritage, Madam Speaker, the feedback from our, our community goes deep, further into our ancestry and what we are rooted in, and it reflects that. So, Madam Speaker, I, again, I respectfully object to these amendments, and I ask that we, we stay consistent with the original bill, which our people came in full support, overwhelming support for this name. And I hope, Madam Speaker, that I can get the support of my colleagues to continue, to keep this bill intact, as what our people supported. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the amendment, Senator, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I respect the positions of the two retiring speakers. You know, as a lawmaker, we are faced with a very unique responsibility, and that is a responsibility for us to be able to be accountable to every facet of our community. You know, we don't just listen to one group or listen to another group and make, and do things at one at the expense of another. If we're truly going to be responsible lawmakers, it becomes a very difficult but necessary challenge for us to try and figure out how we can balance everything in order to accomplish what the greater calling and the greater picture is. And again, the things, the three things that we're trying to balance here is to have a day for our people to reflect on who we are and where we've come from, to be able to afford that day, given the fiscal realities of all the other obligations that we have, and to make sure that day is applied fairly, so that we're not having some people working and some people not, and some people getting paid and some people not, or having to take a day off at some other time or not. You know, and if we're going to be truly approaching things and balancing out those three very difficult things in respect to what we're trying to accomplish here, I'm trying to move us forward in a way that's going to do that. We did that earlier with the First Amendment, that struck out that portion, where we're not going to be having a different kind of holiday, a second-class type of holiday for our Chamorro Day. I mean, we're talking about Guam History and Chamorro Heritage. That's the current name. Or we're talking about Chamorro Culture and Civil Rights Day. But whatever name we call it, enough is enough about having us have second-class types of representation when it comes to the people of Guam. And so when it comes to the holiday, let's have it equal across the board of every other holiday. Let's at least start with ourselves and do that, and we've done that. And now the next step is, we've addressed making it equal and fair, now let's also be responsible enough to address affording it, because that is a shared concern in our community and something that we should, we should be mindful of. Because, Madam Speaker, when we want to preserve our culture and when we want to preserve our language, one of the biggest challenges we have is economics. We have so many Chamoros living off-island, because that's where they got to go in order to be able to earn a living. And in order for us to, to bring our people home, we need to create opportunities for them here, in order for us to keep our people here, we need to create opportunities for them here. And in order for us to do that, it requires us to be responsible with how we spend our money. That's one of the reasons why I've been very passionate about it from day one. It's one of the reasons why that was what my campaign was all about, Madam Speaker, because while we cannot put a price tag to culture, we cannot also ignore the fact that our culture bleeds out of the veins of our island, because it's going off-island in pursuit of economic opportunities. And if we try to find that kind of balance, where we are being more fiscally responsible while being mindful of the culture that we need to protect and promote, we're going to be winning on both fronts. We're going to be able to provide a decent standard of living for our people, and our people are going to be able to stay home and protect and promote the culture with their families and with their children. That, Madam Speaker, is more powerful than any holiday, keeping our people on this island. And we need, and in order for us to do that, we need to make sure the economic opportunities grow and stay here. In order for that to happen, we need to make sure that we're able to afford these kind of things. And so to do that, I'm willing to stand here and propose something that might make some people upset. And I'm willing to say, let's take out Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. holiday, so we can afford our cultural day, so we can afford to reflect on a people's day, and so that in affording it, we can also keep some economic vitality here, we can keep ourselves more protected. keep some economic vitality here, we can keep ourselves more fiscally responsible, we can have more of our people staying home. We can try and balance all of that, Madam Speaker. I'm willing to go out on a limb and say, let's take that holiday out. And in order to accomplish the last part of this overall picture of balancing it, I'm saying, let's also understand that the civil rights movement perhaps began where America's Day begins. When our forefathers did the Guam Congress Walkout on March 5, 1949, that was even before Martin Luther King rose to the national stage. You know, I mean, wouldn't it be amazing if one day somebody finds some kind of old letter of Dr. Martin Luther King probably writing to an associate saying, "Out in the territory of Guam, these Chamorro leaders took the first steps in civil disobedience and won the citizenship for their people. Perhaps this is something we can do for the black community here in America." Who knows? Who knows what inspired the great Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.? But I will say this, if he had heard about what our Chamorro leaders did on March 5, 1949, surely that would have inspired him. And so as we reflect on the question of civil rights and the great things that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. accomplished, and as we try and balance out the cost of this, and as we try to be mindful of our culture and our heritage, let's honor our forefathers, who initiated the first civil rights movement on U.S. soil, by first standing up for the people of Guam on March 5, 1949, with the Walkout of the Guam Congress. You know, I was chatting with my colleague, the Senator from AFME, and he said, "Wouldn't it be something if really the civil rights movement started out here on Guam?" And really, when you think about it, if you really want to be accurate in history, it's quite possible. And he also mentioned, and I agree with him, that imagine how terrifying that must have been. You know, I mean, back then, the United States still had deep-rooted racism, and there still is some prevalent today. The United States had atrocities being committed to peoples of minorities. And yet our people, you know, in the greater picture of the United States of America, were still willing to stand up for what they believed was right. They did it nonviolently. They did it through an act of civil disobedience. And they did it courageously for their people, regardless of their own individual well-being, all of the things that Dr. Martin Luther King embodied. But they did it many years before. So, let's honor Dr. King by doing something that I think he would want us to do: honor our people, honor our forefathers, and set aside this day in remembrance of them. And as we call it Chamorro Culture and Civil Rights Day, as opposed to Guam History and Chamorro Heritage Day, you know, it's not to say that the history is not important, or the heritage is not important, or that the culture is more important, or civil rights is more important. We can call it almost whatever we want. But let's remember that there is much in a name. And in calling it Chamorro Culture and Civil Rights Day, we understand that those are two things that are inseparable on this island that we call home. The Chamorro culture has been and always will be the culture of the people who call Guam home, the people of Guam. Even people who are not Chamoru practice the Chamorro culture. It will always be prevalent on this island. And Civil Rights Day, when marrowing the two, Chamorro Culture and Civil Rights Day, we can sit back and say, yeah, well, what about the civil rights of the people of Guam? When did it start? March 5, 1949. And where have we gone from there? We've gone through so much from there, and we still have so much further to go. So let's make that be the center of discussion. Let's make that be what our teachers teach in the classrooms and talk about with their students. Let's make that be the homework assignment that the kids get when they have that holiday off. When you come back, write down, what does Chamorro Culture and Civil Rights Day mean to you? So that this dialogue can begin, and this discourse can begin. When we were in recess, you know, there was a lot of dialogue back and forth among the members of this body. They talked about how we don't have all of our civil rights, you know, and they talked about how we still have a long way to go with a more perfect relationship with the United States. And that, Madam Speaker, is exactly why these changes will be a very, very good thing for the spirit and intent of this bill, because that's the kind of discussions that we need to be having in our community. Where have we gone? Who are we? And where are we going? Who's done what before? How were they so brave? And how can we draw on that spirit to move us forward? Dr. Martin Luther King would want us to be able to find our strengths, not in looking at others and saying, wow, look at what you did, but in looking at ourselves and saying, this is what we have done, and this is how much further we need to go. So I think that all of this, Madam Speaker, is a very fair way to balance out the challenging part of making this very unique kind of law. And I respect where my colleagues are coming from, and I understand what they have to share. But in the interest of balancing out the need for us to have our own day, the need for us to be able to afford it, and the need for it to be fair and not a second-class holiday, I think that this provides us a very well-rounded approach. And I would like for my colleagues to please consider passing these amendments as proffered and voting on the overall bill as amended in the third reading file. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. Since there are members, of course, who are kind of in between, so I'm going to bifurcate the amendments and call for the First Amendment, which is then on page 1, line 6. And that was to delete then, and of course, it's kind of tied in, but that's the very first, to delete that holiday. So on the amendment, there was an objection, so therefore, all in favor of the amendment, which is to delete, please raise your hand. To delete, to delete, to delete, yes. One, two. Oh, yeah, the two are just walking in. Okay, I'm sorry. So I'll repeat again. We're bifurcating the two. So the first one would be on page 1, line 6, the deletion of line 6. Then I'll call for the next vote, and that is on line 7, is that the change in the naming of that holiday be Chamorro Culture and Civil Rights Day. So the first one, to delete line 6. And there was an objection, so all in favor, please raise your hand. All in favor of the amendment.
We're basically swapping out.
Yes. You're right. You're right. And the explanation is to swap the two, accomplish what the first would call for by incorporating civil rights also, and to inclusive of the Chamorro civil rights as well. So I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, the amendment fails. On the Second Amendment, then, it is a name change on line 7, page 1, to Chamorro Culture and Civil Rights Day. And there is also an objection, so all in favor of the renaming it to Chamorro Culture and Civil Rights Day, please raise your hand. The amendment also fails. So on the main motion, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. You still have the form. My apologies.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So we've come to a point now in the bill where we've taken out the part where we would have actually saved the money. We would have saved $500,000 if we had kept that language in there, lines 8 through 12. But we took it out. And so now what we have on this bill is an entirely new holiday with an entirely new cost, every single fiscal year of another $500,000. And while it can be totally agreed upon that there's no cost to our, we cannot put a price on our culture, you know, that's a very nice way of putting it. The reality is that, you know, with the added cost of this holiday, you know, we're going to need to make sure that we can afford it. And so I would just like for our colleagues to keep in mind that, you know, when we have a lot of other financial obligations, and we have our people who are, you know, leaving the island, and we have our culture that's being basically eroded away because we're not able to keep our people employed here gainfully and maintain a good quality of life here, we need to be mindful of costs, you know. And so we need to keep in mind that preserving and protecting our culture and our heritage is important. But let's not get caught up in the passions all the time either and turn a blind side to the fact that economic realities weigh very heavily on the ability for us to promote and protect our culture. A lot of us who call Guam home do so because we love our island, we love the culture, and we love being able to raise our children here. Let's be mindful of costs going forward. And while I am glad that we took out lines 8 through 12, because I do not want our cultural holiday to be a second-class holiday, you know, I would like for us to work further into the future to reevaluate this listing and to see where we can find out a different holiday than for us to change out. Because it would be good for us to be fiscally responsible enough to be mindful of that cost. I chose Martin Luther King Jr. Day on line 6 because I wanted to try and incorporate something with a greater message behind it that also properly recognized a lot of our great founding fathers, you know, very established names on this island, and a story and a history that really gets lost, you know. I mean, that story of courage and bravery. I've seen some pretty interesting movies that have captured moments in time, snapshots in time in history, that were just so inspirational. And really, if we had some Steven Spielberg or something like that, and somebody write a screenplay on that Guam Congress Walkout, I think it would make an incredible, incredible story. But all of the other holidays that we have here are things that are very difficult for us to even consider. We have New Year's Day, we have Memorial Day, Independence Day, Liberation Day, Labor Day, All Souls Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, Our Lady of Cameron Day, and Christmas. Those are the only other holidays that we have here. And so I just wanted to be clear for the record that I did not want to single out Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. for any particular purpose. I think that the man's achieved great things. But with respect to all of the other holidays and their significance and our inability to tag historical reference of our own people to those other holidays, it was what I thought would be the best fit for us to marry a message and a snapshot in time of what our people accomplished with the need for us to be fiscally responsible. But I always respect the will of the body, and I thank the author and the body and you, Madam Speaker, for allowing me the opportunity to make this attempt. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator. On the main motion? So Senator Morrison, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to thank you, Madam Speaker, for allowing a very spirited discussion, debate on this very significant topic. And I appreciate the discussion with my colleagues, the concerns they have. And I think we've addressed them the best we can, Madam Speaker, as a body. Madam Speaker, we clearly heard the voices of our people, the voices of our children. When I'm out there in the schools, prior to this, going into a bill, I appreciate, again, the cosponsors who help provide feedback to this. I thank the Vice Speaker's Office for working with us to put this, again, on the agenda. Madam Speaker, out there talking to children, and when they ask the question about Guam History and Chamorro Heritage Day, it's really hard to explain to a fifth grader or a fourth grader why we're doing this. But the first thing that comes up is, thank you for recognizing what we're doing. I think what they're trying to say is, when we're celebrating Mess tomorrow, and we're going through all these celebrations throughout the month, and you're out there and you're seeing all the work they're doing with the Chamorro teachers, I think what comes to mind is they're seeing that this body has taken their efforts, and we elevated it to a level where we place them up there with all national holidays, U.S. holidays, and say, you know what, our history and our Chamorro heritage is just as important as Martin Luther King, Independence Day, Immoral Day, et cetera, Madam Speaker. We elevated what we celebrate in March. I agree with you, Madam Speaker, that yes, this should be celebrated throughout the year, not just Mess tomorrow. But what we've done today, Madam Speaker, is we elevated something that we truly all share together. And I want to thank the people who provided their feedback throughout this five-month or six-month campaign since December, and allowing us to work to a name that we can all be proud of and respect. I, again, want to share that, for the record, for the previous speaker, that this bill, I took into concerns of the previous speakers and my colleagues, that we did address the cost issue here. But I understand the body's efforts to see that we do not, and of course, as the previous speaker stated, that we don't want to see this as a second-class holiday to the rest of the holidays. I appreciate that statement, Madam Speaker. So, Madam Speaker, I close with this. I thank my colleagues. I thank everybody for their efforts throughout this campaign, and the people of Guam who helped provide their feedback to addressing this name that is appropriate for this day in March. And again, this is the people's name, and this is not anything that Tommy Morrison woke up one day and said, this is what it should be like. This was the feedback of our people. And I'm very proud of the efforts of my colleagues to help put this together. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion to send Bill 286 to the third reading file without any objections, so Senator Ada on 283?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I haven't received any questions since the bill was set aside earlier this morning regarding the parts of the master plan that is being approved. But I would just like to further clarify that I don't think it's our place to give approval or disapproval on the work that the consultant performed insofar as making his projections, making their economic impact analysis, and all that. That, I think, we can read, and if it appears reasonable, which I think that it is, to support the conclusions they come up with, then I think what we need to do is then to take a look at the conclusions. So based on the analyses that was done by the consultants, based on the projections that they've made, they then developed a capital improvement program schedule, which will put the port in a path to ensure that the modernization of the port continues in the right direction. It identifies the projects that need to be undertaken to ensure that the effectiveness and the efficiencies of the port are sustained over a long period of time. And that also, it identifies projects that really need to be undertaken as revenues become available to be able to undertake those. So that's the first thing that we do. The second thing that the bill does is it adopts and approves the strategic recommendations that the consultants have provided. Now, I also want to emphasize that, you know, when this master plan came here, it left the port with the approval of the Board of Directors. Then it went up to, and then they also had public hearings down at the port, and all that was then sent up to the Bureau of Plans, where they also conducted public hearings, and then took all that information and made their recommendations to the Governor's Office to so- to, to so approve with the master plan that has been provided. And so then the Governor transmitted down the master plan to the legislature and the legislature has 60 days to act on this master plan. Now, we haven't changed anything. We haven't taken, we haven't said, delete this from the capital improvement plans. All we did to the capital improvement plans was we added two additional projects. And that is the sustainment and the improvements to the fuel facilities. And we said that those would be included in the sustainable projects list. So we did not take anything away from what was being recommended in the, in the capital improvement plan. The bill does require that the port over the next two years provides a semi-annual progress report to the legislature and to the Governor as to the progress that is being made. And that is very important because we've got to keep in mind that we have a port that for four decades went without any improvements to it at all. And so now we're playing catch-up. And now that that momentum is starting, we've got to ensure that we stay on top of it to make sure that in fact, the master plan is being followed. So that, of course, was a requirement that was put, but it does not take away from the master plan and, and it doesn't change anything that was already approved by the Board, by the Governor, and now we're approving that. Now, approving this master plan, the legislature's actions to approve this master plan is important because until the port has an approved master plan, then they are able to go to the Public Utilities Commission to petition for the rate adjustments that will be needed to generate the revenues to be able to fund the projects. And so with that, Madam Speaker, I urge my colleagues to support the passage of Bill 283, which will approve the port's master plans as, and as, and the requirements that have been outlined in Bill 283, which is not in any way at all onerous to the agency. Thank you. And I move then that the bill be moved to the voting pile. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senators. On the motion to send 283 to the third reading file without any objections, so yes. Oh. It, yes. Sorry. Okay. On the motion then to send 283 to the third reading file without any objections, so order. Thank you.
Madam Speaker?
We're going to take
I have the Bill 28332, but then not the substituted version. Only the introduced.
No, he said as substituted, yeah. That's, yes. It says here, the one, he handed out, everybody a copy, it says, as substituted by the author? Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay. So Senators, we're going to recess until tomorrow morning at 9:00.